I came out through.
Okay, we're gonna start. I will call this public hearing. And notice is hereby given to the -- that the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 29th, 2009 at 7:00 PM in City Hall pursuant to 24 VSA 4385. The Planning Commission has prepared a municipal development plan pursuant to 24 VSA 4384. Below is the statement of purpose, the geographic areas affected, and the table of contents for purpose municipal development plan for the city of Virgin's. And if you don't mind, I won't read this whole thing as everybody has a copy of it, I believe. If anybody would like to hear the full nine yards, I will do it, but otherwise, I will forego that and we'll go right into the public hearing portion. Let me set some ground rules in this hearing. We are not here to debate at this point in time any comments that are made. We're here to take testimony, so hold any comments that you have. This is for the council. And if you choose to discuss those items, once we get into the business part of our council meeting, then that's fine and dandy. So, without any further ado, I'm gonna open up and invite Matt to be the first one to give public comment. Matt?
Thank you. For the record, Matt, Jerry, I own a property at 30 Main Street, which is in the residential limited business zone. And as you all know, I have lobbied for probably more than two years now to help what I think is a cause that is good for the city to increase the business uses within the limited business zone. And most recently, I have sent, or actually probably hand-delivered, I missed a couple of you, I got to chat with most all the rest of you this last weekend. It's way too nice of an afternoon to be home or running around doing that, but anyway, I hope you all had time to look at the letter and the graph that I included that the Planning Commission had done from their survey, and also the definition that I included. I have noticed, and I did chat with some of you about that, is I might be confused, I've been confused many times, might be another one, but it wasn't my verbiage, it was the Planning Commission's verbiage in calling what was in that graph of 81 respondents that had said that they supported professional service as a use in the limited business district. There actually is not a definition for professional service in the zoning regulations as they exist now, and I'm not sure what other people might think of as a professional service. I know what my definition of a professional service might be, and I think I've hit onto that some, and I'll get into that in a second, but it -- it is somewhat confusing. Anyway, I did write down a little something here, let me see if I can get this spit out so it makes sense. I wanted to clarify a couple of points that I've made in the past and in my most recent letter to all of you council members that I delivered here this last weekend. Professional service shows up in at least one of the zones as a conditional use, I think it was in the IC zone, and doesn't seem to show up anywhere else in the ADIOP pages of the zoning regulations as they exist right now. I thought that that was curious, but also probably adding to some of my head scratching that I've been going through, the current definitions of zoning regulations, there's definitions for an office, there's a definition for a professional residence office, there's a definition for personal service, but there's no professional service definition. I guess what I think of as professional service, and this is the part that I would like to see whether it gets added to that zone or just in the definitions, it gets included, is that I think of a professional service as like, maybe it's like a one-on-one service, so it's like a barber, or hairdresser, beauty parlor, seamstress, et cetera, and that I'd like to see those as an allowed use, ever how it wants to come out, whether you include those types of professional services into the professional office definition, or actually put in professional service and put a definition for that in the zoning rules when they actually do come out. I am not sure whether it's an oversight, an error, or on purpose, and but I think that, to me, that those would be better into the definition of a professional service. As it is now, those professions are included in the definition of personal service, which also includes laundromat. And I honestly, myself, don't think of a barber shop or a hair salon as should be included in the same definition as a laundromat. And I think I hit most of my points, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Matt, for coming tonight and sharing that with us. Are there any other one, anybody else here to speak to the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the City Council meeting. I'd ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Warrants have gone around, I guess everybody has signed them, we'll just get them back to Joni. The one other document that was going around, Ziggy, I think you were the last one to sign it, just one spot.
There's two.
There's two, okay.
And then I signed these, this one.
Okay, you're good, that's it, and we'll see that, yes, let's do that now. That got lost in the midst one time, and we want to bring closure to that. All right. What I'd like to do at this point is, I'd like to ask for a motion on the minutes for September 8th meeting, 2009, Virgin City Council.
Make said motion.
Randy, you made the motion, Chris made the second. Ask if there's any omission errors or corrections that need to be made at this point. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We're gonna move right up to the public comment portion here, yep, I jumped over that. Excuse me. Matthew, welcome. This is Matthew.
Matt Barong, owner of Three Squares Cafe down the street. I think most of you know why I came this evening, it's in regards to the series of break-ins that the Main Street and off-Main Street businesses have been experiencing over the last couple of months. I've spoken to quite a few of the merchants, bars, restaurants, retail outlets, and whatnot, and speaking on behalf of them, unfortunately, no one else could make it this evening due to family obligations and whatnot, but all of them, including Park Squeeze, Virgin's Wine, Bar Antidote, City Limits, Black Sheep Bistro, Uptop Tavern, et cetera, asked me to speak for them here. And voice of concern about the gap in police coverage in the overnight hours. We feel that filling this gap in the coverage could do a lot in helping prevent these break-ins from happening as regularly as they have been occurring, and to basically, you know, help us out with that situation, to help protect our businesses. It seems that these occurrences are happening when the police go off-coverage. It's no secret that they're not on duty in the wee hours of the evening, and we're just hoping to have the city be able to fill that gap in coverage to help protect the businesses, and residences for that matter. Multiple break-ins at several places, I mean, I've been robbed twice in excess of $6,500 total between the two break-ins. I mean, fortunately, I am insured, but also, it affects premiums and, you know, things of that nature. Lot of the businesses have taken steps, upgrading security systems, cameras, larger safes. I mean, I did that after my first break-in and experienced then to just return with bigger tools and rip apart a 450-pound gun safe that I had bolted to the floor. So, we've all been speaking at length over the last couple of weeks amongst ourselves, and we're hoping that we could speak to you guys in hopes that we could do something with staffing with the police force to help close that gap in the evenings.
Does anybody have any questions of Matt's, or about any of his comments?
Melanie, response that you'd like to offer at this point? I hate to throw you under the bus, but...
Yeah, one thing, Matt, I actually do have a question for you. The article that it was in, seven days, towards the end of the article, there's a quote from you, says, "With all the press about our police chief recently resigning, comma, every media outlet in town is advertising that there are no cops in this town." He says, "If I were a criminal, I'd be robbing Virgin's too." Is that an accurate quote from you?
It's taken a little bit out of context. What I said was, the media coverage around the state in regards to Mike resigning, and also Matt resigning, kind of painted a picture that there was a lack of law enforcement here.
Okay, because I just want to let everybody know that every time that I spoke to anybody from the media, I made it crystal clear that all shifts were filled, despite the fact that Mike was on paid administrative leave, and Matt was on leave, and at the time Patrick Greenslett was on disability, all shifts were filled. I made it crystal clear to every media in that regard, also pointing out the fact that all of the regular officers had to forego vacations, part-timers had to take on more duty than what they normally would. So, you know, when I read that, I was trying to find out what media wrote such a thing, because I've been obviously having to deal with every media, and I told every media that shifts were always kept, so I just...
The point I was trying to make with that statement was, the fact that so many media outlets were covering this story, and covering it, you know, at length and with quite a bit of vigilance, that it was just sort of broadcasting the fact that there were issues in this town, you know? And I was more trying to take a dig at the media outlets for kind of painting this picture. That was in no way intended to, you know, take a poke or a jab at the police department, or the city, or anything of that nature. I was actually more trying to take a jab at the press for, you know, running it so constantly. So, that was sort of what I meant by that.
Mel and I have had some discussion prior to, and even after, some of the events that have happened, we've talked about looking in, we haven't got there yet, but we're looking into doing some alternate shifts so that there is not a steady pattern. We have some individuals, speeders, that go through town very, very early AM. They should be treated the same way that the person that goes flying through at 7:00, 8:00, 9:00 at night, and addressing anything else that is needed. As far as people breaking in, the best thing that a store owner can do is, and I know that you have done that, is alarm the place in a manner that we will get some form of notification, because in the past, when they're in that part of town, somebody's doing something over in that part of town, and I don't know how they communicate, but they seem to stay one step ahead of you. But, by all means, that's no excuse, and we are trying to look at a schedule that might improve some coverage.
I do have a question on the overnight coverage. I know that somebody is on call at night when there are no actual officers on duty. What kind of response time are you looking at on that? I mean, I just had a system installed, you know, a contacts, I don't want to contact the local police, et cetera, but when there's no officer on duty, I was just curious what kind of, if you have any idea what kind of response time that would entail, like 15 minutes, half an hour?
Well, I mean, some of the officers live in Virgin's, so if they're on call, you know, I mean, it should be as quick as putting on their uniform, you know, it could be five minutes, so, you know, it should be, it should be very, very quick. I was gonna say, a lot faster than a state police, but I don't want to say that on TV.
Too late, Mel, too late.
Can I, as a banker, can I just throw in my two cents? You know, we have the log bags where you can put them in a night drop and have them hold them, not make any deposits, but just so they're holding your money overnight, and then you can retrieve your bag in the morning and take your, and make out your deposits. But they, we do have that service where you just, so there's no money on the premise, you just put it in the bank night drop, and come get it in the morning, and then do your deposits.
And we do do night drops, and the one thing that disturbed me the most about our previous break-in was, nine days out of 10, we do the night drops. We didn't do a night drop that evening, and we got robbed. So, it's, I have the sense that it's a little bit more organized than random acts of B and E's through a back door. And I've spoken to the police about this, they have more details, but, yeah, we did not do a night drop that evening, for whatever reason, I don't know. But, like I said, probably nine times out of 10, we were doing them, and I just think it's an odd coincidence that happened to be the night that we got robbed again. So, there's definitely some form of, you know, surveillance involvement, at least that's my gut feeling, so.
Any other discussion questions of Matt?
You know, one of the things, Mike, I think everybody knows at the table and in the room, you know, Virgin's operates a typical small-town police department, of which typically a small-town police department does not have 24-hour on-duty coverage, and there's gonna be gaps, there's gaps in every municipality. You know, if you, you know, to consider filling that gap, you know, it's not a small price tag. So, there is going to be gaps, and one of the things about, you know, I absolutely agree with patterns, I mean, you know, as you mentioned, Matt, there has historically been a pattern of our shifts, and I certainly don't, that is certainly something that we should look at, but also keep in mind that we have to manage our labor, and we don't offer 24-hour-a-day on-duty coverage, and when you fill a gap, another gap appears. And what can happen is, is that if a gap appears, we create a new gap that's from 11:00 in the afternoon to 1:00, then we end up with three call-outs with two-hour minimums and whatever, so that all of these things end up with an economic impact that we have to, that we have to juggle. So, you know, certainly we can certainly look at the schedule, but we also have to keep an eye to the budget. That's, you know, it's, we have to use, you know, we have to work within that adopted budget.
I work over budgets with my business as well, and I have certain percentages that I have to maintain, and et cetera. Absolutely, I completely understand that. I'm just saying, you mix up the pattern, if possible, you know, to at least keep these guys on their toes. And, yeah, I've spoken to a couple of other residents in town who have experienced traffic stops on like, Panton Road at like, 2:00 in the morning, and I was thinking that maybe, and this is just me kind of, you know, having a thought on the subject, maybe have the cops speed trap on Main Street, so we at least have blue lights flashing in the middle of the night, so there is a presence while they're still, you know, maintaining their duty of enforcing speed violations and DUI stops, et cetera. Again, I mean, I'm not a law enforcement guy, it was just a thought that I had had.
They, their stops and speed traps that they do, when they do them, are random. They're not just Panton Road, they're all over.
Okay.
Yep. Doesn't take but about two minutes for a cruiser to set still, and people know that it's there. Somehow, the word gets out.
Joe?
Just out of curiosity, I wonder, outside of increased police coverage, has the city ever looked into other means of, for example, lighting, or that alleyway? I assume that most of these break-ins are occurring in the backside of these businesses in the alley.
I'll share the same alley.
Is there any, has anyone ever looked at lighting, or other?
That's... Not quite accurate. The difference is, Park Squeeze, that alley is actually privately owned. The alley behind Matt is actually a city street, that is a city street. It's a city-owned alley, that's the difference, so what we own is very limited in what, in Matt's area, we own a strip of land that's 11 feet 6 inches on one end, and 11 feet on the other, it's all paved, so we don't own that, we don't own or control that land.
Okay. Is there a possibility of getting more lighting back there, possibly?
I'm saying, we don't own it.
Okay.
We only own 11 feet, that's all that we own, and so, that's all we own, that's correct. All right.
Who is responsible for that? Is it the property owner responsible for the lighting back there?
Yeah, if they wanted to have more lighting, they would install lighting, yeah.
Okay.
Where that would have to go? Good idea, Joe. Okay.
And I just wanted to come down and speak to everyone, and just voice of concern.
Very good, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, anyone else here for public comment? If not, we'll move into committee reports.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Warrant's question.
Warrants?
We're, we, last month, we paid for car computer equipment. This month, we paid again for car computer equipment.
Yes.
Last month, we paid for two. Did you ever find out what that was, or is it?
Yeah, Joe, thank you, Christine.
It was an excellent catch on your part. She thought she avoided it out, and then she loaded in another check, and it went on that check, the other check, so she had to avoid it out. It was a duplicate.
Yeah, one thing, not that this is, not that this is a big deal, the computer equipment for the cars is actually a 100% grant, and let me, I mean, I'll give you two seconds about what this computer equipment really does, and it's a little frustrating, we, I talked to some of the police officers today, because we got this grant, it was one of the first grant applications that I signed, that I signed last December, and the equipment that you see these bills for is still sitting on top of the lockers. What the equipment, one of the capabilities of the equipment which lands in each cruiser is that you can load in your incident on the spot. You don't have to write in a bunch of notes, and then at a certain point in time, go back to the office and try to read your notes and load it into an incident. It keeps an officer in his cruiser out, outside the office, so it's a means to basically get more, more coverage for the same dollar. But this thing has gone on, Christine, I think it's about an $18,000 deal, I think it's like $6,000 for, so if you're wondering, like, gosh, you know, another $2,000 for computers, there's various vendors involved in the various components of this computer equipment, and we're waiting on some software or something to get here to finally, to finally implement this program. I mean, it should have been in place, you know, 10 months ago, you know, because it really, it's a, to me, it's a really a great tool to be able, it's like your office is on...
On wheels.
Your office is on the road, I mean, it really, it's perfect for us, so that we don't have to go back to the office. I mean, spending time in the office, you know, isn't really police, isn't really police work.
All your state police cruisers have them in it now.
That will help Matt.
It should, absolutely.
If they see some stuff, they can, they don't have to go through a dispatcher to run, they can run a plate through the computer, they can do a lot of stuff, real-time, right there at the laptop, versus having to involve a body, it records and keeps information that is run through the computer, so.
Saves time, yeah.
Yep. Great tool.
Any other questions on budget?
Budget, just, you know, obviously, the bills that were in your packet are incorporated in this budget. I kind of double-checked something, we actually have only had 12 pay periods, we, the 13th is coming up, so we aren't quite at 25%, so if you're kind of looking down through there, you know, you're gonna see that wages are short of 25%, and they should be, because it's only 12 checks instead of 13. The budgets overall, you know, the police is actually in a little bit of, in a little bit of trouble. Obviously, we've gone through a period where we've, you know, paid Mike, and then paid Ted at the same time, so that one, you know, is a little troubling, but it's, you know, it's still early in the year. One of the things that, there is a line item in the budget of some $16,000 for capital outlay, which was intended to purchase some needed equipment, and the balance of which would be, would be going into a fund for cruiser replacement. That decision will be deferred until June. Now, if we get to the end of the year, and let's say there's $10,000 left in there, that we would typically want to move into a police cruiser replacement fund, if because of labor, we're in a little bit trouble over on the labor side, then we would just forego that to, in an effort to keep that budget online. So, like I say, once we get, once we get to next June, and, you know, you wonder how come we, you know, how come we didn't spend the $16,000, that's why. We're just gonna hold off until later in the year.
Chris?
Okay, I do have one more question on that. With their uniforms and accessories, I noticed they got raincoats.
Yes, and winter coats.
Oh, winter, okay, that's what it is.
Yeah, keep, one thing, Christine, keep in mind, I want to be careful not to throw people under the bus, all right? You gotta remember when I put this budget together, okay? And remember when I presented it to the city, all right, which was in May, all right? So, I'm dealing with information that I have in May, all right?
Enough said.
All right, so, you know, obviously, we have, you know, different personnel here. One of the things that we did very, very early on was had a complete department meeting to figure out where the heck we're at, all right? You'll notice that vehicle maintenance is over as well, and that's because, you know, the condition of our vehicles, brakes, routers, these type of things, were not as good as what we thought, so a little bit, we had to kind of restructure a little bit, so that's why, that's why you're seeing some of those, some of those numbers.
Any other questions? If not, now we'll move to committee reports. Lowell, Anderson, from your end of the world? Joe?
I know there's, we're gonna be talking about the swimming pool later in the meeting. I was, there was a school board meeting last Monday, I was on duty, and my pager went off, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to make that meeting, but I see there's a gen item coming up.
We'll bring that up then?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Ziggy?
Well, we had a Cracker Barrel on Saturday. It was very, as far as I'm concerned, very productive, and we had not as many as we thought was gonna be showing up, but it went well. The superintendent was very helpful on some questions that we had concerns about, and was explaining different things that they're working on, and trying to make things better, especially like the school bus. We talked a little bit of possibly, you know, all the schools joining together again. We had information from what was going on in legislation about the, about that we're kind of in the lead, they're looking at us to see if we're gonna be, you know, how we're gonna conduct ourselves and how we're gonna do this, because we're kind of like, right up front. because we're kind of like right up front. And then we had an economist there and I, Ben?
Ben Lawrence.
Yeah, he was very helpful in explaining what is going on and maybe down the road we'll be able to do more. You know, hopefully get into something locally, but right now he just helped in the system what's going on around the whole world practically.
He, he, we also had his wife Ivana there.
Right, from Job Corps?
She touched a little bit, she threw a little bit extra to the, the fund and discussed a little bit about Northland Job Corps and some of the stuff that was going on over there and the excitement that they're, they're very ecstatic about where they are. They're now calling the academy instead of a campus. So that you'll, those that can attend the community meeting in a week, on the October night at noon, free luncheon. Just got a RSVP to them so they'll know you're coming. So there'll be more information there. And we were pleasant to have a visitor from Bosnia who really was impressed on being able to sit at a table with some surrounding towns and discuss business because that's not allowed over there. So it was, he understood English very well. He just couldn't speak English very well, so.
And also was brought up that possibly Job Corps may have be giving classes that possibly that Virgin's doesn't have that our students could probably go over there, you know, and have interchange and some of their students will be able to go over. They're working on that as working as one. Instead of, you know, like even if Hanford doesn't have, carry the classes and they carry them over there, then our students, we're going to work as a team trying to help each other out, send them back and forth.
There's one other thing. I don't want to take too much wind out of their sail in case they're, they're keeping this as a, their own surprise. But they, they have, everybody knows the background of some of the students over there and they have, they had some at-risk students that have really turned their lives around. And now they're establishing a mentor program and they're trying to make some connections with the high school to use those kids that are having trouble in the high school connect with those people that have already walked the walk and so it's, it's, it'd be better handled and work together. So again, Andy, you might want to talk to Ivana on that right directly and, or.
She'll be, she'll be over.
Oh, she is. Yeah. She's a bottle of fire. So, yeah. Anything else you want to?
No, not right now.
Like, like Zig said, very small turnout, but very productive, very informative, excellent.
Randy?
Nothing to report.
Snow season's around the corner.
Yes, it is.
They're predicting the next couple nights up in a higher elevation, so get the wood fire started. David, I know you have something to report.
I, I did attend the school board meeting last week. It was, it was a nice meeting. The new commissioner of education, Armando Viasseca was there and spoke about the topic of unification and also some of the other programs that are specifically related to the high school in terms of the transformation process that that facility is going through. And it was, it was a good, broad, general discussion. There wasn't anything that I heard that was very specific. And I also took the opportunity to raise some of the concerns that some of my constituents, our constituents here have brought to me regarding the tax implications of Act 60 and 68. And I think I, I got some agreement from the folks in attendance that there's certainly an issue with that legislation. And again, I'm, I'm hopeful of trying to get a group of folks together before the legislative session that can come up with something of a, it needs to be a real bipartisan effort to come up with something that they can put into play immediately upon the start of the legislative session. Because I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only one that's relatively frustrated with the inaction of the legislature over the past few sessions in addressing, you know, what are very, very serious issues with regard to taxation and spending in the state. And I've said it before, I'll say it again, this district here is a well-run, productive district. There are other districts in the state which are not. Under the current funding mechanism, this district essentially ends up subsidizing those districts which do not perform as well, both from an educational and financial perspective. I don't have the answers to that. I've spoken with a lot of people and it's just a question of getting them all to agree to the parameters that I envisioned for this forum, getting them all in a room and having them hash things out so that as a group, go to Montpelier January and get to work. Additionally, with regard to unification, as everybody probably recalls, there was an effort several years ago to unify the elementary school districts into one district. That effort ultimately failed. And, you know, there was some concern and criticism on, you know, certainly on my part with regard to that effort. And going forward, I've spoken with Mel about this. I'm drafting a letter to send to the board, specifically I asking several things. One is to identify any specific efficiencies which unification in the district will achieve and any associated cost savings relative to those efficiencies. Balance sheet, or essentially a balance sheet with regard to assets and liabilities. If we're talking about unifying the physical, the, the cost associated with the maintenance and operation of physical structures, it makes sense to know what we're dealing with. And, and so we, we want to know where things are with each individual school before we move forward. And, and also any short and long-term capital improvements which are identified as being necessary with each of those facilities. And, and all of these are, are of a concern to me as an alderman in terms of protecting the interests of the residents of this city. And I would imagine that there are other folks in Ferrisburg and Addison who would have the same concerns and be doing the same things. You don't want to go into these types of situations blind. And so what, what I'm planning on doing is giving the folks that are involved in working hard in this process all the time in the world to come up with the answers to these questions. And I'll, I'll be working with Melvin on that letter. Additionally, there's an agenda item later on with regard to the skate park and I will wait it till that time to speak regarding that.
Thank you. There is one other thing. You were talking about having some sort of candidate representative, representative forum. Is there, do you have any more information at this time?
Still trying to put it together. It's been a little difficult in terms of people's schedules. It was difficult during the legislative session. I've got some names at this point. And it's a situation of essentially trying to figure out who should be in the room at this point. I, I, I do not want it to be, I do not want this to become a partisan political issue. I'm, I'm a businessman and I certainly, you know, that's, that's generally where my interests are going to lie. You know, I look at my piece of it as I'm trying to put this thing together. There's, there's a certain level of resistance in terms of you talk to one person, well, I want to know who else is coming, you know, and if this person is coming, I don't want to come. So on and so forth. But, but I've, you know, we're, we're in the process of putting together some names. I spoke with a couple of people tonight about it and hopefully we'll be able to get that together relatively soon.
Based on your statement, it sounds like they don't play good in the sandbox in Montpelier.
Absolutely not.
Then we need to look who's in Montpelier.
Absolutely correct. And, and, and I want to make clear that's not casting any aspersions on any of our local representation here. But I will, you know, I'll certainly go public with this, that I have spoken with a number of individuals who are essentially in fear of the majority leadership in Montpelier. And I'll leave that at that.
Good. Okay, thanks. Miss Chris?
I don't have anything. I'm on the agenda for a couple of items later down, so.
Okay, good deal. Then we're going to move right into whole business. Mel, 5A?
Same thing, Mike. Nothing, nothing new to report relative to 5A and just waiting to hear back from the court.
Okay, we're going to jump right to 5B. Virgin's graded school district, disposal of real estate.
Right. I don't know if Joe wants to speak. This is, this is the memo that came from the superintendent. I think I mentioned this before, that, that they were holding a meeting to discuss this on, on September 21st. And as you can see, they're, they're looking for the city to consider taking over those facilities in essence effective July 1. So they're, they're landing that in our court, Michael, at this, at this point.
Do we have any recommendations from the council as to, do we want, need to establish a committee? Side committee to discuss what, how we go forward? How do you want to move on this?
I have concerns on some of this. I'm just questions, especially now we're talking about, you know, unification on the overall picture, you know? I just have some concerns, you know, like we're taking this and this is where the pool is, the skating rink, tennis courts. So that means we'll be maintaining this, right? So this is all we're getting. This is all they want to give us.
Correct, as I understand it.
That's the proposal, correct.
My concern is, you know, I don't know if this stops here. Maybe I'm not even supposed to be bringing it up, but the unification is down the road, you know, possibly. My concern is like with parcel A. And then we have over here that says area not included. Does that still belong to them? Is that still part of, off to the right, right down below by your hand, Matt?
If you, if you're wondering what, what, what that means, the, keep in mind that the Virgin's graded school district owns the land or owned, I should say, you know, the, the underlying land of the pool, tennis court, skating rink. The city leased, the city has a lease for the tennis courts and a skating rink. And then if you look just to the right where it says Union Elementary School District, that 14.1 acres. The Virgin's graded school district owned a lot more than 14.1 acres. They own this area not included, that 11 acres. They also own where it says Dickerson, there's another eight acres there. The graded school district owned all of the property that you see on this map, you know, in those, let's call it four parcels. The recreation parcel, the Union Elementary parcel, the so-called area not included in conveyance, and the Dickerson parcel. When the Union Elementary School was formed, only 14.1 acres of the graded school district land was transferred to the Union Elementary, all right? I, I will tell you, I will tell you the logic behind the 14 acres if, if somebody's wondering about why was it 14 acres. The reason is that there was really a feeling that the elementary school is in essence a neighborhood school. And therefore it should not be a school that is allowed to grow, to include the elementary school and the middle school. You know, it should not be allowed to grow to a school of, of 700 students, let's say. So there, the, the 14 acres was very purposefully chosen in size because at the time, and this may be the rule of the land today from the Department of Ed, the enrollment number is equal to a formula of 10 acres. A minimum, a, a public school has to have 10 acres. That gets you 100 students, students. And for every acre above 10 is another 100. So therefore, a 14-acre parcel affords up to 500 students. So that was very purposely put together so that if the elementary school was, needed to grow beyond 500, then a school needed to be constructed somewhere else because it was too big, it was felt that it was too big of a, of a facility to be in this neighborhood. That was the feeling, all right?
So that ate that, so do we, do they still own the eight acres off to the side here and?
The Virgin's graded school district, yes. And they still, to this day, they still own the 11.99.
Do they have to maintain all that to keep the enrollment that we have now?
No, no, that's, the.
It's right here, all part of 11.99.
Now, it's my understanding, and I don't know this for certain because I, this is the only map that's been provided, is I do know that the graded school district intends to, to liquidate, all right? And these other parcels, it's my understanding that of these two parcels here, the so-called 11, or call it 12 acres, not included in the conveyance and the Dickerson, I believe that those are going to be split. And part of the land goes to the Virgin's Union Elementary and part of the land goes to the Union High School. Some of the athletic fields, as you can see on here, you know, some of the, the high school athletic fields are actually on graded school district land.
Okay.
So I haven't, I haven't seen another, another map here, but I know that that's their intent.
Well, my concern was that if we were going to be somehow down the road unified, it seemed like I would rather have Virgin's take over some of this land instead of having it in the unification where you have other towns also involved. I mean, this was just, but I didn't know if they needed, you know, part of this. But you see where I'm coming from, you know? Like if it's in Virgin's, we got to.
I don't see where you're coming from. I'm sorry.
It's because, well, if we unify and we have, and they still own all this land over here, you know, then that would.
I follow that point.
All right. It would seem like it would be, you know, if it's in Virgin's and then they don't really need the land, I think Virgin's.
You're talking about the city of Virgin's, not the.
The city of Virgin's, you know, would, would pick up this property instead of unification. I mean, I've had a couple of people.
You'd rather, you might, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You'd rather have the city own that property than the school, the unified school district? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I had people approach me on it and ask me about it, so that's why I'm bringing it up tonight. You know, why do, why, why would that go with the unification? Couldn't that go back to the city of Virgin's or was it, did it once?
I guess I'm not sure why this, why that, how that, what that has to do with the, the current issue at hand.
It doesn't, but down the road, you know, this is what I'm saying is that because of everything's been brought up, if we just accumulated this, period, we got this.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we down the road maybe somehow might need this for some reason. You know, if they don't need it over here for the unification, why can't the city of Virgin's pick this up? But Mel just said they're thinking of splitting it.
The, the.
The off to the side there.
Some of this, the 12 acres here and the eight acres there, I believe it is the, I believe that it is the graded school district board. It doesn't say it in this memo because obviously the memo is very focused on this. But I just know this from talking to my, to my sister-in-law that their, that their intent is to split this. Because some of the, you know, some of the outdoor classroom that is associated with the Union Elementary School is over in the area not, not included. As I mentioned, some of the athletic fields that are really a part of the high school are on graded school district. So they're trying to, in essence, delineate, delineate that correctly.
All right, that's why I asked because I knew there were nature walks over in there and people just saying, you know, if we, if they don't need it, why can't the city of Virgin's get it back? But if you're, but if there's a, that's why I'm asking if you needed it or not, but apparently they're going to split it up.
Said he never owned that, right?
That's correct.
Right.
Right.
The school did, but they're saying if, if, if we do that, they would wonder why we can't, you know, if we could pick that up, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably, you know, in part, you know, you know, is it our business or not our business? You know, one of the things that comes to my mind is, is really maybe there's property owners on New Haven Road that, that would like to own a little more land and, and if there really isn't anything envisioned, you know, on that, on that eight-acre parcel, you know, you know, would there be any consideration to, to see if, Jason? I wasn't thinking about you, Randy, but anyway, you're, you're on this list here, aren't you? Anyway. Anyway, I just bring that, I just bring that up as a possibility, but I, like I say, their memo to the council is very focused on this piece.
Just, not even part of this discussion, but just for knowledge, there has been some talk, at least about a year ago, and I think it's still moving forward slowly, is they want to increase that nature trail from what it is all the way out to Route 7.
Well, that's why this person called me. They had concerns that possibly wouldn't happen if.
You'd lose it?
Yeah, that's what.
I don't know.
If they didn't need it, they'll say, you know, why?
A person to contact and have some discussion would be, would be Cheryl Brinkman. So if you have some questions, she might be, she would be a good resource to pose those questions to. Okay?
Um, back on this piece of property that we're looking at, uh, taking over, uh, really would like to figure out what would be the best way to move forward on this, whether we establish a committee, and, uh, we, we really need to have a game plan, uh, come about April tenth, or hereabouts?
Well, uh, you know, one of the things is, is, the board voted unanimously to deed the property in question to the city of Virgin's effective, you know, July one, two thousand and ten. Obviously, the pool opens before July one, so there, if we are gonna take it over, there's going to obviously be a transitional period here where, some of the, the players that are currently involved with operating the pool will need to continue their role in operating the pool as, in essence, transitions, you know? I don't, I don't really see this as being where suddenly, somebody gives us the key, I mean, we, we really need to have a transition, you know, if we're going to take it. But I think that the, um, I can tell you that when I'm, uh, I think it was clear to, to all of us, Joe and, and Mike, that when we went to the meeting, it was very clear to me that, that the, that the superintendent's office is, is, has no interest in, in having this be a part of their property. I mean, yes, Mount Abraham has a swimming pool inside of their building, but, you know, typically, uh, schools don't own, you know, public pools. So they really want, they really want this, uh, cause other, other than the, the two or three weeks, you know, that, that, you know, Robin Newton uses the pool as a part of the phys ed training, it's, it's really disconnected to their operation, so, the idea of keeping this in ownership and operation under the, under the school is basically off the table, alright, and.
But there will be some stipulations in, in the gift.
As to their use.
As to when, when it can be used, and so, I mean, it's very clear that they have, excuse me, um, they have, have some definite concerns, and that will be a part of a overall plan.
Who maintains the upkeep right now on all this?
Uh, they're, they do, they have, you know, they have funding, they receive, you know, receive funding, it's not, it's not a moneymakers, they.
Okay, no, I was just wondering, so then we would have to maintain everything if we took this over?
That's correct. Do we, do we need a motion, I, I guess I'd look, to set up a committee? I mean, I, I would make a motion that we establish a committee for the investigate, to investigate the transfer of this property from the s- school to the city.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, open it for any other further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of forming a committee, say aye.
Aye.
And, so, hearing, they, known, um, I would ask for volunteers to show, show hands, and I would ask Joe that he chair it, chair the committee. You can make your name known to Joe afterwards, if, if you'd like, uh, or, and it would be nice to even get some citizens involved on that, Joe, so, you, you know of some, or somebody on, on the council knows of somebody who wants to, uh, involve some citizens. Um, I, I don't know if she would do it or not, but I, 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 would you ask Kitty Oxall? I think she'd be, cause she is a neighbor and, um, has a great, uh, interest in a couple different ways.
People that are, uh, swimming team, uh.
Yeah.
And so forth.
Kim Palmer, oh yeah, excellent. Okay, good. Um, moving to the next item. Item number five C, stifens for elected and appointed officials.
I apologize, this is a full screen. But at least we put the lines at this time. Um, I didn't hear from anybody, but the only thing I added, um, as I explained before, on the top part, that is what it currently is. And I emailed these various, um, towns, and they so graciously responded with the information. And just below that, where you see Addisonberry, Bristol, those are an explanation of my little stars up there. Um, the bottom part where it says Vermont League of Cities in Town, that is directly from the survey book. And I started out choosing cities, and then I thought I better get closer to our population. So that is a result of that survey book, and then my recommendations are in the middle, and the only part that I added, that wasn't there last month, is that mileage will be paid for all elected or appointed representatives of the city for out-of-town training meetings at the current IRS rate.
We can act in any form on this, adopt some of it, adopt none of it, um, but I would like to hear some comments, so, um, I'd hear, like to hear some form of a motion, Randy?
Make the motion that we discuss the recommendations for stifens for the city, um, aldermen and, um, members of the boards.
We have a motion to discuss. We're gonna do that anyways, but, hey, could you, could you either make a motion to, or could you modify that to, uh, either approve?
Oh yeah, appro- approve, do you either approve or deny, or?
To approve.
To approve.
You have to do one or the other.
Right.
Yep.
The recommendations.
Okay, we have, I believe, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have a motion to approve Chris's recommendations, uh, for the changes in the stifens. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay, now we're gonna open it up for discussion.
I have a question. In the recommendations, you have the mayor, and then you have the alderman, whatever, but then you have fifty dollars per meeting, so you're just planning on one meeting a month that would come up that's sixteen hundred? And one meeting a month, which would, then that, that would be for eight hundred?
That is a base of one thousand and a base of five hundred base.
And then twenty-five dollars and fifty dollars per meeting?
Correct.
Well, so, but we have two meetings a month.
Some months.
Some months, and then some will even have more, but I'm just saying, you're just saying pay for just twelve meetings for each?
Well, that's what we were, that's what we were, I was thinking, but I forgot about that.
Okay, I'm just asking, you know?
That's right, but some, some meetings, some months we do have the two, but then some months we don't.
And then any other extra meetings we have, that would be maintained the same, you know, we have emergency meetings and stuff, okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, I think the, the current formula, Joan, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, it is, we, we currently do have a base and a per meeting, right, Joan, and, and the way that it works, that it's, it's really, it's like fifty dollars per month if attended, if attended.
Two meetings.
Required, you know, regular meetings of the month, so I mean, if there, if there was only one meeting scheduled in, in July, and you attended, then you got your fifty dollars. If there was two meetings scheduled in October, and you only went to one, then you would, you would not get the, uh, you would not get the extra.
Alright, so if you only have one, you still get paid a, a fifty dollar fee, is that's what you're saying, a, a month for that one month? No, but that's what he was just.
Well, I think that's what need is, is, I think that's what we're trying to clarify.
Okay. I, I don't have an answer for that.
Alright.
Cause I didn't think about.
But now's the time to discuss it.
Right, right.
For clarification, so we can, we can either bring closure, cause we have a motion, uh.
So if we did it fifty dollars a month,
Mm-hmm.
and twenty-five dollars a month, no, that would become out, right, cause if you.
It would have to be fifty doll- a hundred dollars per month and fifty dollars per month, from what he was.
Right.
No, that works, that math still works, it's fifty dollars per month, if, if, in attendance at all, all regular meetings in the month.
Fifty dollars per month, yeah.
If we're both there, right, right. Right.
I mean, you don't need to get into one or two, just say, you know, that it's, it's not per meeting, it's fifty dollars per month, if in attendance at all regular meetings during the month. That, that's really the way that we currently do it, right, Joan?
Yep.
And that's what she's saying here.
Okay.
Well, no, she was saying twenty-five dollars per meeting, that would mean some meetings you didn't show up, but she.
Yeah, it's gonna be just.
Right now, that's what she's saying.
It's still gonna be just twenty-five dollars a meeting, though.
No, we're talking about raising it to fifty.
We're talking fifty dollars a month, and if there's only one meeting that month, you still get paid fifty dollars, correct?
The ma- the mayor.
No, the mayor.
For the mayor.
The mayor.
Alderman only get twenty-five dollars a month.
Right.
Well, that's, that's only for one meeting, then we're not getting paid for the second meeting, if you only get twenty-five dollars a month.
That's how it is right now.
That's how it is right now.
Right, but she, her recommendation, so we're talking about what she wants to do. Then it would be fifty dollars per month and a hundred dollars for the mayor per month.
Right.
Okay, yes, that's what it will be.
But that would push the annual over what the, the, she has it equal to here.
Well, that's why I brought it up to her, because it wasn't making sense, so, that's why we're talking right now.
So in all, I'm gonna see, as proposed, with the fifty dollars.
It would be another three hundred, so that would be eleven hundred. And then the mayor would be another, another, uh, fifty dollars, that would be another six hundred, which would be twenty-two hundred.
I'm gonna make the comment, we're not in this job for the money.
I know. But that's why we just.
Twenty-five dollars a month, to me, it's fine.
We get paid twenty-five dollars per meeting now, don't we?
No.
Yeah, but they're gonna increase, they're gonna increase the base.
Per month.
Right. Right, so if you just.
Should we take this back and get some clarification as to?
I think Mel has already provided the clarification, we just incorporate that into our motion and adopt it if, if that's what the vote is. Yeah, I think, like, where it's, where it says fifty dollars per meeting, that should be replaced by saying fifty dollars per month, provided, uh, provided all regular meetings are attended.
Alright, and that's for the mayor?
That's the mayor, and the alderman would be twenty-five dollars per month, provided attending all meeting, all regular meetings in the month.
So if you don't show up one, you're getting ducked twelve and a half dollars?
No, if you, if the ba- if you, if, the way that we have historically done it, and, and, is that, if you go to the, say if you have a meet, um, um, if you have two regular meetings in the month, and you make the first meeting, but you missed the second meeting, you get paid, you don't get paid any additional fee. That's the way that it, that has been set up.
Nothing, okay.
But we, we don't wanna, you know, I mean, enough of this.
You don't have to do it that way.
No, and, and that's what I have concerns about with, with some people attending regular council meeting and two, three, four, or five other meetings, I, I.
Yeah, I mean, it could be written.
Again, you're not in it for the money, but you, you don't wanna penalize somebody that's try to perform, uh.
Yeah, I mean, it could be written to say fifty dollars per, per month, provided in attendance at le- in, at, attendance at, at least one regular meeting of the month. It could be written that way, uh.
But what was happening, why they worded it, that it was based on attendance, is we had aldermen that were not coming to the meeting, and.
And, and this isn't designed based, this was not designed towards alderman and/or mayor, it was originally designed to look at other groups.
Other committees, people that sit on.
Committees, that, they, they sit on them.
To get reversed.
We wanted to try to be, uh, performance-based, because if, if one person shows up to three out of, whatever, twenty-four meetings, it's, that's not a good thing, we, we don't wanna award that person, but somebody that shows up out of, uh, twenty-two out of twenty-four meetings, or twenty-four out of twenty-four meetings, we wanna, you know, make sure that.
See, what, what's, what, right, what messing me up is that she's got fifty dollars.
Per meeting, it wasn't per month, and that's what was throwing me off.
Right.
Per meeting.
So let me go back and revise it one more time, and I will send it out again in larger print.
I was just asking.
That's, that's, that's a good point, um, we have a motion and a second, can I ask that we?
I make a motion.
Withdraw?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Who seconded it?
Lo.
Lo, can we withdraw your second, okay?
Now, can I just ask?
Yeah, we can get into some more discussion?
Right, the, are the rest of the, the DRB planning, that those are right, those per meeting, they only have the one meeting?
They have two meetings per month.
They can, they have special, uh.
What I should do is eliminate the dollar figure at the end.
Cause it's really a budget number at the end of the day.
Right.
Right.
So if, if, I mean, if they had one meeting fifteen, and if they had another meeting, we'll pay them fifteen again.
Mm-hmm.
Alright?
Yeah.
And I'll just eliminate those numbers.
Because like you said, uh, you could have two meetings one month, or one meeting, but, um.
Or in June, you meet every single week.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's only about regular meetings, I think is what.
That should be clarified in the language, regular meetings.
Regular meetings, not specials.
Or work sessions, or any of that.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm writing, per month, provided all regular meetings attended, for all these positions.
If that's the way you, I mean, that's, it comes down to.
Comments from anybody else?
So you're saying per meeting, twenty-five dollars per meeting, is that what you're saying, and leaving the dollar signs off on the end, so it could be anything?
No, no.
Per regular meeting.
Per regular meetings attended.
Council meetings.
Right, so if you, if you, if you attend two council meetings in one month, you get paid fi- twenty-five dollars each time?
Right.
Okay.
And, and if I ha- if we have to call a, a special.
Is that what I had on?
No, 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 okay, well, that's why I'm asking, because it says per.
No, per, per month.
Okay, so we're gonna change the word per month?
Per month, provided all regular meetings, so if you attend one meeting out of a two-meeting month, you don't get it, so.
Right, but that's why I wanna get these wording out.
Yeah, she's gonna correct the wording for next time.
That's what she said, yeah.
Right, alright. And that, so that was my next question on the DRB and planning, to do the same for them as well.
Yeah.
Say yes.
And how do you wanna der- address when your special meetings?
You don't.
No pay. Not, not, not covered.
Okay.
And what about on the note on the site, if aldermen also serve as alternates on DRB and planning, is that? Is that gonna be deleted too, cause those are special meetings in a roundabout way?
They, they aren't, they, they aren't special.
Alright, so then they'll, they'll get paid, okay.
Yeah, if you, if you're brought in, you're, you're attending a regular DRB meeting.
So that's okay.
Should they be drawn, how should they be drawing pay against that? Should they, should they be drawing pay?
Uh, I mean, they're, they're, they're really sitting in and, in the place of a member.
And, and they would be paying, if, if she was on the DRB, she'd be getting that fifteen.
That's right.
Obviously.
That's the only thing that she, yeah, she wouldn't get a, there's no base, she would get the, uh, the, uh.
No, right, no base.
Right, okay.
Right.
Alright, so I.
Quick question, it's, where someone has a, goes to one regularly scheduled alderman's meeting, can't make the second one, but goes to a bunch of committee meetings?
Good question.
You know, I don't think they should necess- just personally, I don't think they should necessarily be penalized, cause they have a scheduling conflict, fam- you know, something comes up and it's a second meeting.
I should just say per meeting, so much, per regular meeting. I just tell me what I'm saying.
Not be difficult, but I'm just trying to, I'm trying to be fair to you guys, you go to a lot of meetings besides the regular meetings.
Well, that's what I mean, if you phone to a meeting, you gotta get paid for it.
And your kid fall down, need a stitch, and you missed one, there goes your money.
I mean, it's just that, yes, there's so many other obligations besides just the regular meetings.
It works out the same, twenty-five dollars per regular meeting.
Randy?
This has turned into a more complex.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
Than it, than it really needs to be, because.
I wouldn't say that, I mean, obviously, we're all talking about it for a reason, so.
Well, we could do away with it all and just get a flat fee a year, you know, like eight hundred dollars a year, or thirteen, or whatever the math equals.
But I have a concern, there's no driver, driving force, because, I mean, if we could end up back where you could not show up for, you, you could be, an alderman and, and not show up for any meetings, and the fact that you're elected into the position, you still collect three, four, five, eight hundred dollars a year for just holding the title? I, I'm not comfortable with that.
Some sort of, some sort of.
Attendance basis, what you're.
I, I like the attendance space.
Okay, twenty-five dollars per regular meeting.
Everybody wrote over me.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't, I was, I didn't hear you. Go ahead.
It just, it seems to me that this has been, there's too much already attention being paid to this detail. When we were elected to this position, it was to fill a need for the community, I appreciate the money that I received from this, and I mean, equivalent over, I'm gonna say twenty-five dollars per meeting is, is, to me, is a bit absurd. I do this because I wanna do this, and, I mean, I'm happy with twenty-five dollars a month, I'm happy with the base, whatever the base may be. But I, I think we should just put it to bed and go on, move on to the next thing.
I agree with Randy.
So what do you suggest, then?
Yeah, what do you suggest?
What do you suggest?
My suggestion is the base plus twenty-five dollars a month and walk away.
So you're saying a base?
Which is whatever, whatever that, uh.
The same as we're doing now, except the base has been increased from three hundred dollars to.
Five hundred dollars.
To five hundred dollars.
And it's, and the, the.
And everything else stays the se- exact same way it is now.
And the attendance, the attendance factor, if you will.
Is exactly as it is now.
Requires attendance at all regular meetings for the month.
Right.
As un- as unfair as that may seem.
That's good, because see, that, why I did it, I don't want somebody coming, joining. That's good, because see, that, why I did it, I don't want somebody coming, Joanie, down the road and start arguing with her about something like this, that's why we gotta get it cleared, yeah, that's why we gotta get it cleared now.
It just, it's.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what we'll do.
Per month, provided all regular meetings attended.
Yeah, and that's the way that it would be for, for DRB me, DRB members, planning commission members, it's all based on all regular meetings.
So we're changing the meeting to the month.
I make said motion.
And I will second said motion.
And I will send a clarification out to all of you.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I'm not sure exactly what the end product is gonna be.
It'll be crystal clear.
Crystal clear.
It'll be crystal clear.
You got it.
Can we afford it now, before I ask for a vote?
I was gonna bring up effective date, and actually tell you the truth, as to when this would go into effect.
I would think after the election, after March would be April one.
So that will work.
It'd go March one.
But we don't pay until August, so that way, it's, it's next year's.
Yeah, but I mean, it'll start in March, for the time period, beginning March.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would sus, I, I think that it would go into effect for March regarding city council members, and, uh, what do, I needed it to coincide with the same year for, for DRB members, it's a little, it's a little different. Let's go backwards, February, it means.
Do the after.
Well, yeah, I'm saying, because what happens is, is we, we pay them in, it's, it's August, September, October, November, December, January, that would be February one for, for DRB and planning, DRB and planning commission, March one for city council members. It coincides with their appointment terms, and it coincides with your elected office terms.
Okay, we're, we're gonna, I'm gonna muddy the waters a little bit more here, because nothing was mentioned in the, uh, motion, or any other site talk, it was at the beginning about the paying individuals that have to travel on, uh.
I thought we, we made a motion to accept the recommendation.
Is that still a blanket, anybody agrees with that one?
Yes.
Okay, I agree, if anything else doesn't pass today, I want that to pass, the rest of it, we can, well, that, that should take effect, do you have a problem with that taking effect immediately?
No, not at all, no, not at all.
Okay, now, how do we wrangle ourselves into a, Joanie, how are we gonna create a motion here that Randy just made, that's gonna meet all our needs to, we should do it in sections?
Well, you know, you're actually accepting the recommendations here, as proposed, with the exception of the mileage going to.
No, that was, that's a part of it, that's a part of it.
That's part of it, on the side.
And, but the only thing, now we have to build in stipulations as far as the date effectiveness thing?
Yep, effective, uh, March one, two thousand and ten, for city council, and effective February one, two thousand and ten, for DRB and planning commission, mileage effective immediately.
Chris, you had your hand up.
Can, can I ask him to withdraw the motion, let me make it crystal clear, and look at it again at the next meeting?
Yeah, we're not losing any, we're not losing any time.
Right.
The only, the only thing I, that I would like to see, if at all possible, to, uh, pass the portion of the mileage, so that if something does happen, you know, would you guys mind withdrawing your motion, and, and, and she'll get to crystal clear, the only thing that I'd like to try to, if everybody is willing to do, is, is pass the portion of, of paying the mileage.
Can we make it just a policy, effective this date, that we will start paying?
Um, it's good.
Sure, it's fine.
Any elected or appointed.
We'll get a policy then?
It's fine, it's okay.
But my thought is, is, is she already has the verbiage down to get this, to get this motion passed, why even table it and bring it back up if we can go ahead and, and pass it now?
I agree, I agree with this.
Well, the only reason I ask for that is that, because I wanna clarify that, where it says if aldermen also serve as, uh, the alternates, I wanna clarify that there's no base pay on that, and no special meetings will be paid, I wanna make that.
How about I withdraw the motion and redo the motion right now, so I'd like, I want this done, I would personally like to see this closed tonight.
Okay, how do you feel about that?
I just did it, huh, I did, did I go do a good job? Okay, I, I will make the motion.
Okay.
I gotta withdraw my.
All right, withdraw, I'll say draw, okay.
That we accept this stipend survey.
Have you got this written down, or do I need to write this?
I'll, I'll send it to you, um, with the following changes, that the fifty dollars per meeting be changed to fifty dollars per month, provided all regular meetings attended, the twenty-five dollars per month, provided all regular meetings attended, and the fifteen for the DRB and planning, provided, um, the regular meetings have been attended, and to clarify that there is no base pay for those aldermen serving as alternates, or ex, officio, officio members, and there's no special meeting fees will be paid.
Do we include the dates?
Well, I'm just trying to think how to word that, this will take effect immediately for the mileage, and for the council, it will go in effect March first, two thousand and ten, and February first, two thousand and ten, for the DRB and planning.
And I will second.
Do I have a date for the mayor?
It's council.
It's council, it's council.
It's all part of council. We have a motion and a second, do we have any other further discussion that we need to, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, thank you. That was interesting, eh?
I got it, though.
All right, uh, let's see, we're down here, don't that, don't that. Sewer extension policy, Mel.
Christine.
Um, our little sewer committee met downstairs earlier today, and we are considering adding additional land outside the current agreement, um, the city, we feel the city should return to the stance that it would be, would only be an intermunicipal agreement for tax sharing on increased, on increased taxes resulting from the development, which was specifically related to the sewer, so we aren't gonna be de, dealing with individual people, but with the town, um, and we're gonna meet again to look at the uses that we'll put in our agreement, and then we'll finalize that agreement.
And I take it, once it's finalized, this has to go in front of the voters?
The steps would be, once we finalize this, uh, it would, it would actually go to the town of Ferrisburg, for them to contemplate whether or not it would be something that they would put in front of their voters, at the same time that we would put it in front of our voters.
Okay, Joan?
And we'll get back, you know, we'll, we'll meet again before the, within, I would, I'm gonna say the committee will meet again, you know, by the end of October, let's say, to try to finalize that and get that back to the board for your review.
Very good, thank you, um, so we don't need to, any files, or any action on that, um, item number E, amendment to.
That's done, that's one that was passed.
That's all, fast, and jump right to Mel for a city manager's report.
Yeah, four items, first one, um, I, I didn't get a chance to, to speak to Mike, oh, I did need to add one thing to the agenda, 'cause I would like to have the board take action on this, uh, got a, uh, request from the Opera House, uh, as many of you know, uh, the rules have changed relative to occupancy for unsprinkled buildings, you know, to have bans in the serving of alcohol effective October one, uh, you cannot, you cannot have an Oxy level above one hundred, uh, this, so obviously, that affects this space, uh, I believe that the Opera House has, uh, contacted the state and are working on a plan, uh, whereby they develop a plan to sprinkler this building, and therefore are provisionally allowed to have occupancy here of above one hundred, uh, going forward here, the, the Opera House, um, you know, is hoping to raise funds, a combination of raising money and, and grant money, and they have a proposal, uh, put together that is going into the Vermont Arts Council for a twenty thousand dollar grant, I'm not sure what the date of the, uh, what the deadline is on that application, but they requested that, that a letter come for the city, and so what I'm looking for would be for a motion from this board authorizing the mayor to sign a, an endorsement of this twenty thousand dollar grant, of which I have this letter, eighty-five percent done.
Motion, seconded by Randy, show me the motion, Joan.
Who made the motion, Joe?
Um, open for discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Uh, second item is some good news, although I don't have this in my hand, um, at the last meeting, we talked about applying for a grant through the, the so-called big program, boating infrastructure, uh, grant program, uh, they actually, at the last minute, changed the deadline from September twenty-fifth to September twenty-fourth, uh, which is not a big deal, but that cer, certainly kept me busy on the twenty-third, uh, but anyway, put together, uh, and thanks everyone for going to the meeting and taking a look at needs, uh, what also was helpful, brought it up, uh, at our non-planning commission the other night, um, we, we didn't have a, didn't have a quorum, uh, but Mark Hatler and Neil and I met for a while about, about the basin, uh, the next day, I spent, spent some time with Carol O'Connor, who obviously lives in Breeze down there in the, in the, in the basin area, and I put together a grant proposal of some fifty-two thousand dollars worth of improvements, you know, floating docks that we talked about, uh, possibly expanding utilities, water and sewer, uh, this grant program, unlike others, uh, as you, when you read the fine print, actually does maintenance work, and the dock on the wastewater treatment plant side, if you notice, the surface there for years, I mean, that's a twenty to twenty-five-year-old dock, and the bricks have settled, there's some unsafe conditions there, so I incorporated, um, in essence, rehabilitation of, of that, a pump-out station, and anyway, submitted that, and, uh, the very next day, I got a call from, I can't pronounce his name, Mike Waschinsky, or something, something like that, uh, as I understand it, there was only three or four applications, uh, the Vergenza application ranked second, according to him, and the first, the first place applicant, uh, there's ninety-five thousand dollars available, and apparently, the first place applicant didn't request all ninety-five thousand dollars, and Mike wants to do what he can for everybody, so he and I chatted on the phone to, uh, see if, whether or not we could have a little bit larger of a, of a, of a local share, uh, I talked to him about in-kind services, we talked about changing the budget, so, um, the, the good news is, I think we're gonna get some, some funding from this program, uh, however, you know, the bad news is, it's not gonna do everything that, that was in, incorporated in the application, but anyway, sounds like good news, but again, I, until I get that grant agreement in my, in my hand, uh, uh, we really don't have it, but that's, it seemed as though that's where, uh, they don't wanna just leave any, leave money on the table, so I think that, you know, he was, uh, you know, enthused by what, you know, what we do down here, and, um, and, you know, wants to provide some, some funding to, to, in essence, grow our marina.
I'll share some numbers with you in a few minutes as to this year's.
Uh, next item, uh, police chief, uh, search, uh, I have, I believe, six, uh, the deadline is tomorrow, I, I have six applications that have come, uh, via snail mail, uh, and I have about twenty applications that came, you know, via, via internet, which, you know, people could, could submit applications either way, so we will, uh, we got, uh, we have a little bit of conflict of schedules with, you know, Kitty's schedule and Ted Manal's schedule, the group isn't going to meet, uh, to shortlist the applicants until October eighth, but, um, but anyway, we've, we've got, uh, response, there's certainly, uh, uh, some of the applicants, certainly not all, but some of the applicants are, are clearly qualified to, uh, fill, so I, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that we can, uh, you know, find a candidate amongst, amongst the applicants, you know, maybe we'll see some additional applications tomorrow as well, uh, lastly, uh, the, the fire truck arrived, uh, made it back from Alabama, I haven't seen the truck, I spoke to Ralph today, Ralph has seen the truck, he is extremely impressed with this, uh, with this piece of equipment, I don't know if Christine, if you've seen the truck, if anybody else has, but anyway, Mike has, uh, but they say that it's a good, uh, that it's a, a good truck, so, uh, so that one's here, in another month or so, we'll, uh, hopefully see the, the ladder truck arrive, and, uh, as I've mentioned before, uh, that should get us in good shape for ten, ten to fifteen years, easily.
After both trucks are in, we'll try to schedule, uh, one of our meetings down that way, so that everybody can go up and preview them, check them out.
When's the new pumper show up, uh, the new pump truck?
The ladder truck.
The pump truck itself, the.
Oh.
Oh, the other one.
Oh, the other one.
The other one.
That is a good question, and I, and I, and, and we don't know when that's gonna be, we know they're working, we know they're, we're working on it, but I do not have a, a, a firm delivery date, 'cause it's, you know, this one seems to be taking a little longer than what was expected, um, so, the, the replacement mini-pumpers, what you're talking about, right?
Wrong truck, wrong name.
It's, it's in the shop, Randy, you know, so that's all I had.
Okay, very good, uh, jumping around, number seven, A, um, resolution, bond application, null, fire truck, um, Mel, you want some space on that?
Yeah, Joan, I guess the originals made it to you, I copied every, copied every one on, on everything that came down from the Merchant's Bank, the Merchant's Bank was able to, uh, accommodate us, uh, Shelley Quinn, um, VP of Government Banking, I believe is what her title is, she stopped down yesterday and delivered the original documents, which I believe there's at least a couple places for signatures there, Joan.
Three, three. Now, we need a motion.
I think you need a.
We need a motion.
Need a motion and ask for signature.
And then we'll pass it for signature, so I'd ask for a motion.
I made the motion.
I have a motion and a second, Lowell seconds, uh, open for discussion, thirty seconds worth, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And we have one abstaining.
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure there's a couple places, probably not enough lines either, Mike.
Okay, so, look for my signature in a couple place, three places, and if you find mine, and if there's not enough lines, add some. Okay, yep. We'll go this way and then back around, that way it ends up back at Joan, okay, excellent, um, item number seven, B, Barindo, request for malt liquor, uh, that is being held at?
Right here.
Opera House, all right, and the date is, okay, hang on, find you.
October.
October third, yep, right there.
Yeah.
October third, um, hours of operations are from three-thirty PM to six-thirty PM, um, they expect seventy-five people, so, uh, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
Lowell made the motion, Randy second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reception for the Opera House fundraising event. Next item is, uh, item number C, and that is Discussion Skate Park Oversight Committee, and, uh, Jay, thank you for being patient, I know you're here for that, so, um, who wants to start the conversation, David?
Yeah, as everybody's aware, the, uh, you know, just to bring everybody up to speed, the skate park has been closed, is currently still closed, um, and we're trying to, uh, put together a process to get it reopened, um, you should have a letter in your packet, um, from, uh, March nineteenth, two thousand and seven, from, uh, the city to Tom O'Brien, um, and, and this was an action taken at a council meeting to establish an oversight committee, um, and, and, you know, not necessarily throw anybody under the bus, but, um, we really dropped the ball on this, um, and, and that's possibly some of the concern going forward with the operation. Um, and, and that's possibly some of the concern going forward with the operation of the other recreation facilities down there, but that's another subject. Um, so, this was the framework that was adopted, um, and there really wasn't any follow-through. So, what I've spent a fair amount of time doing is talking to a bunch of different people, figuring out what went wrong. Got a pretty good handle on what went wrong. Um, and, you know, not to belabor the point, but I think it's important for everybody to understand going forward. Essentially, what occurred is we had a committee and, um, keys were made. Um, some of the older users of the park were, were given keys, um, a bunch of other keys got made. Really weren't any clear parameters established, other than the signage down there. These young folks that were given keys were, you know, they, they were really handed an untenable situation, you know, they were, they were put in a situation where, you know, they're expected to police something without any clear direction or clear authority, um, to do so. Um, and, and so things kind of gradually fell apart and, and it culminated with a pretty significant act of vandalism to the, uh, the Warming Hut facility, and, and that was the impetus for the decision to close the facility. That being said, as I've said before, it's not necessarily fair or appropriate to blame the young people that are using it as a skating, as a skateboard facility. Nobody's come forward and said, "Yeah, I saw that guy do that." There, there's been a, a, a name, um, that, that I'm aware of and Jay's aware of, and there's a number of people aware of, but, and, you know, and the, the way we operate as a society, unless somebody's willing to come forward and say, "Yeah, I witnessed that guy do that." Not a lot we can do at this point, um, other, other than try to prevent those issues going What, what we've come up with is this, is that there's a few things that need to occur before we get that facility up and operational. Um, one, we, we need to appoint a committee. I, I don't even have any idea who's on this committee that, that we appointed. I, I don't even know if it ever met.
It's in the, it's in the minutes, who the players were.
But I, I don't, I, I, I know it hasn't met for a long time. Um, you know, the ball has kind of landed in my lap. Um, Jay is also interested in, uh, in, in serving on this group, and I've talked with a couple other folks as well. Um, the, the plan is this, is that both Mel and I feel that in order for that facility to operate, there needs to be a level of supervision down there. Um, and whether that's supervision by some of, of the older users of the park who've proven a level of leadership and a level of responsibility, um, or, or whether it's parents or some of the users, um, or whether it's eventually a paid position. The point is, is that what can't happen is somebody with a key goes down, unlocks the facility and leaves. That doesn't work. Um, and, and it's not necessarily just a question of vandalism to the facility. Um, I'll run down what some of the other issues have been. There's some significant safety considerations. Um, there's inappropriate graffiti, and there's, there's drug references, um, there's gang-related graffiti down there. Um, we, we wanna get that painted over. Um, the other issue is that there's other, there's, there's people down there while the park is in use that are not there either to participate, um, in using it as a skate park, um, that there's a level of harassment sometimes. There've been people down there drinking, there've been people down there smoking, there's been people down there smoking weed, um, and all, all sorts of different types of behaviors that, you know, we, we really can't have down there. And, and that's while the, that, that's during daylight hours while the facility is open. And, and it's not, you know, it's not these, these young people with the skateboards that are doing it, you know, they're coming to us and, and saying, "We want you to do something about this, you know, we wanna use the park, we're down here, we're trying to skateboard, and there's some clown sitting there on the edge of the ramp, smoking a cigarette, you know, flicking ashes at me while I'm trying to skateboard." It's not why we built the facility. Um, so, we've spent some time talking with the users of the facility, and I've, I've come up with a pretty broad and general idea of what works and what doesn't work. It may be a situation, based on what we hear back from our insurer, we, we may be required to require safety equipment in use down there. Um, but, but I would certainly expect that one of the requirements that they would place on us is that there is a level of supervision. It's, it's not, you know, to get everybody to think about it in the same light, it's not that unlike the, the Sam Fishman pool. You know, we, we wouldn't consider using that facility, you know, just saying, "Hey, here's a key, unlock the pool, you know, there's no lifeguards." I, I mean, you know, if, if, if there was an event in that particular scenario, our insurance probably wouldn't cover it. Um, and, and this isn't any different, so we're trying to protect our interests. Um, and the, the other, the, the other piece of it is, 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 and, and it, it mentions it in here, um, you know, developing a plan for some of these other things that it talks about, maintenance, fundraising, um, you know, they're, they're, they're wood and metal structures, and sooner or later, everything starts to degrade. Um, so there needs to be a plan in place, just as with everything else in the city in terms of maintenance and replacement at some point. Um, so, I'm, I'm willing to take this on as a project, um, and, and Jay, uh, and there's a couple other community members that I've spoken to as well. We've also, I, or I, I have also had some discussions with, um, at least initial discussions with folks at Job Corps. Some of their students use that facility. They are also, uh, the demographic over there is a little older to a degree. They, a big part of their program over there is developing leadership potential in the students. And I had thrown it out there to, uh, to a couple folks over there, um, that it might be a situation where they had some of the students over there who, uh, had proven responsibility and leadership, who could act in a supervisory capacity. What am I talking about, about a supervisory capacity? Basically, it's this, is we have a schedule. Park isn't open just random hours, you know, and again, the model we have is a pretty good one, we'll get the Sam Fishman pool. So, we have a schedule, um, we, we get somebody who's a park user, or maybe it's a parent of one of the park users. They say, "Okay, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, or 3:00 to 7:00 PM, or whatever it is, I'm taking that slot." What do they do? They have a key, they go over there, they unlock it, they stay there, they supervise the activity. If there's any issues to deal with, the issues are dealt with. If there's any issues they can't deal with, um, they, they call the appropriate individual, you know, whether that's myself, or if it's a serious matter that requires immediate rectification, it's a police department. But the other piece of it is, is that that individual would also be responsible for the, um, completion of an incident report. Incident report would be coming to play in the event that there's an issue which does not rise to the level of needing to involve law enforcement. It's a complaint from a neighbor. Noise is too loud, kids are swearing, somebody's drinking, you know, all, all of these types of things, which aren't necessarily anything that's going to result in a federal case, but it's a concern to somebody.
Are these issues that this committee's gonna take care of?
Should be. Um, and, and, and I'm just, I'm, I'm just kind of throwing out, you know, what, what didn't occur and, and what should occur. Um, the, the other folks that I've spoken to that would be interested in being involved in it are Justin Bassett, Rodney Olson. Justin is a, a member of the planning commission. Rodney Olson is an educator who has a lot of experience with young folks.
Can I just add, uh, I'm a member of the Vergenza Community Resource Team, which is a group of professionals and teachers and so forth that are sort of organized. I haven't been able to attend any of the meetings because they occur on a time that I, I'm not able to attend, but, uh, it's come through the conversation on the email that, about this issue, and Lee Shory sent a, um, a message out this weekend. I, I tried to reach her today to get some comment for this meeting, wasn't able to do that, but I see they're in a meeting Thursday morning and this issue's on their agenda. So if you'd like, I could, I could sort of be a liaison with that group.
Sure.
Um, to see...
I, I think that the critical piece of it is, is that, you, you know, we wanna have a, a, you know, we wanna have involvement, um, but one of the, one of the issues is, is we've gotta get it right, you know, this time. You know, Mel and I've had a lot of discussion, um, and, and we're, we'd like to come up with a plan to open it on an interim basis, and the first step to it is to appoint this committee, get our, our insurance, League of Cities and Towns down here to look at it. Um, you know, those are really the two things that need to occur.
And you're gonna be working on that, right?
I already contacted them there.
Randy?
Um, how does Bristol operate there? The airport, is it at a, skate at your own risk?
That's certainly what it looks like. Uh, I mean, 'cause it's not fenced in, you know, I, you know, I, what I don't know, I mean, this is, our facility is obviously a town-owned facility, and, you know, we do need to be following what, you know, uh, the, the League of Cities and Towns probably in casualty, uh, in essence recommend or requires, as David says, you know, it's very possible that the Bristol thing is on rec land. I think, I don't know that it's town land, so it's a little different setup there for some reason.
But isn't rec land all the way to town?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that semantics?
Uh, no, I don't think, it's not, I don't think it is semantics. I think it's, that's, I think it's a rec, Andy might know if it's the rec, rec, you know, I mean, we can find that out, but I, I think that there is a rec.
Well, it's like, is it, I'm gonna throw it in now, isn't it like a beach where it's like Kingsland Bay, and, you know, it's, there's no lifeguard on duty, it's as...
No. No. Because the, the, the issue with it, the, the issue with it has to do that, that, you know, whether it's Kingsland Bay or Town Beach or whatever, you know, there's some level of improvement per se, you know, there's a road going down there, and somebody might have trucked in sand, built a dock, so on and so forth. We've specifically constructed some structures that are designed for a specific purpose, so we're essentially held to a higher level. In, in my opinion, I think it's a ticking time bomb to have something like that as a use at your own risk type of situation.
Right, yeah, I can.
And right now, thing is being destroyed.
Yeah, I mean, the issue is, is, it, the, the issue with it is that, you know, you've got a, you've got a group of young people, and, you know, Jay might have a few words to say too, you know, you've got a group of young people, you know, so there's this, this culture essentially, and, and they're, you know, they're going here and going there and, you know, getting chased out of here and chased out of there. And, and they've been, um, they've been very, very patient, you know, through this whole process, you know, I've, I've gone over and met with them, you know, try to maintain a, a dialogue so that they know that we're not just sitting on this thing. Um, but my, my plan would be to, you know, there's not that much of a season left, um, but, you know, as soon as we get this committee appointed, um, you know, we can work, we can, we can work getting some of these folks in place as supervisors, get the thing open, and it may not be a, you know, it might even be a situation, you know, where a parent comes to me and says, "Hey, I'm willing to step up to the plate on this," and it might be it's open Saturday afternoon, you know, but, you know, to, to create something for the rest of the season, I think, is important.
Well, if, if we're gonna follow the format that was laid out originally, then the school district has to take care of, uh, one, two, possibly four or maybe five people on that committee. So we really need their input as well, uh, if, if we follow this format. Either that or we've gotta change this.
We own the facility.
True, but if we did establish rules and guidelines which aren't being followed...
Absolutely.
So either we have to reinvent the wheel and create a new committee, new design, but I think because of the ownership of the land, this was part of the reasons why some of these people were originally on the committee to start with, or supposed to be. That's, that's why, uh, at least that's what I understood. So, either we need to go back to Tom O'Brien and say, "Tom, who are those members from the elementary school prudential, and the prudential committee?" And, uh, as far as the, the community, uh, we, we can work that issue and, and, uh, as far as the youth go, we can work that issue. I know Rennie was supposed to be the city, city represent...
He was.
...at that time.
And Mike Lowell was for the...
And the, a police officer, so...
And the community member was Mr. Spitzel, and he was supposed to choose two youths, two responsible youths.
So you've got that. Okay, thank you, Joan.
That's in our minutes.
That's in the minutes, so...
So I, I, I guess what I'm saying is this, is either, you know, um, you know, either, either we move forward when we look at this and say to these people, "Why didn't you do what you're supposed to do?" Or we, uh, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, um, you know, I'm, I'm interested in working on it, but, you know, what I'm not interested in doing is, um, I'm, I'm not interested in working with people that aren't interested in working on it. I guess I'd throw that out there.
Well, I, I would hope they'd, and when they establish the committee, they would get interested parties to, to make it work, but...
Can I, can I make the motion that David be the representative from the city and be the chairman of this group? And let him make the contacts and, and with the, the regards to the police department, and then follow up with Tom and Jay with regard to the other positions that are listed here?
So I know that, uh, Joe was offering some services there to see how he could, uh, help interface, I don't know.
I'll talk with, uh, with this committee or find out what, I won't be able to attend their meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
But yeah, I'd be happy to.
Help interface.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I guess, uh, along with that, uh, I, I don't wanna leave Mel out of, out of the loop, he has to be part of this.
Yeah, I, I, I know it is a little, uh, it may sound a little awkward, but it's not awkward for me and David, uh, to deal with this, because even though, on the one hand, David is, is one of my bosses, but on the other hand, he understands that when I say, "You aren't opening that facility until you have adequate provision," he can't overrule me.
Absolutely.
Uh, 'cause it, this board can overrule me, but he, he can't overrule me, uh, so it's, it's okay.
Mel and I work well together.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Second.
And I have a second. I'll have David be the chair.
Okay.
Um, any other discussion? Jay, you are...
Thank you. Um, so, I just wanna make sure that, obviously, when we put the committee together, that's when a lot of this stuff will get discussed, so I don't wanna take a lot of time right now, but I think it's really important that people realize the separate, the difference between the vandalism that occurred and the skate park. I think the skate park just happened to be in the wrong place at the wrong time, and I, I just, I think we're missing that piece. Um, and I, I think it's just important that we're aware of that. The problems we've had down there have been with the Warming Hut. Every time the vandalism has occurred there, we haven't had problems with ramps getting damaged, or, you know, people going in there and trying to destroy the actual skate park itself. And so I think it's, I think it's two different issues. The supervision piece, I think, is important because our kids aren't safe down there, because there are drugs and alcohol and other things like that, that we're not sure who's doing it, but someone's doing it, and they're not safe. And so the supervision piece definitely needs to happen, uh, better than it did before. Um, but I, I think that's, that's a different issue. Vandalism has been happening in that area for 30, 40 years. I mean, many of you might know about that from your youth. Um, so I think, I think we just need to be aware of the fact that the skate park and the vandalism happening are possibly two separate things, so I'll be at the meeting on Thursday with the community group, so I can, can represent.
Uh, I agree totally with you. We are unfortunately penalizing the wrong people.
Right, and I think, you know, I mean, I think about the tennis courts and, and things were damaged there, we didn't close the tennis courts because people stole the, you know, I mean, but we're closing the skate park because the bathroom in the Warming Hut was destroyed. You know, it, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. And people get to that stuff, they get in that skate park no matter what. There's plenty of ways to get in, so, I just, I wanna make sure that we're, we're focusing on the right piece and... I just, I want to make sure that we're, we're focusing on the right piece and, and all that.
But I think we were trying to squeeze, excuse the expression, but squeeze some information out of some people that may have been there using the skate park at the time that some of this may have happened. Again, speculation, but I've heard, like David has heard, some, some pretty good stories and.
And I have as well.
Yep. So, you know, it's taking ownership.
It, it does send a message that we're not messing around. When these things happen, there are consequences for them. In this case, the consequence was the closing of the skate park. And that, that makes sense. I just want to make sure that people are aware of that. We, I feel like we're really dealing with, with two separate issues here.
Okay. Mel, your comment?
I, I wanted to be clear that I closed the skate park for two reasons, all right? One reason was the vandalism, which was occurring from with inside the skate park. But either equally importantly, or more importantly, you can't have a facility like this without supervision. So I closed the facility, all right? And yes, they happened kind of both at the same time, but, you know, it really can't be run, you know, with a, with an open door. It just can't, you know, it's, you know, people need to be wearing safe, you know, they need to be wearing, there's multiple issues there relative to trying to have the place on, when it's unsupervised. One is, you know, profanity. You know, there, there's also little bits of vandalism that occurs, you know, the signs have been picked at and you can't read the sentences there. So there's minor parts of vandalism. So, you know, you know, what needs to, you know, supervision obviously needs to be in place, but also somehow there, you know, folks need to respect these properties. And, you know, I, you know, Jay's probably right, there's been vandalism down there. It's a tough spot because it's so tucked away. It's, it's a tough one. And I don't, I don't know that I have a, a solution to that. It's always unfortunately going to be subject to vandalism. But the key to opening the skate park is not about, is not about vandalism that has occurred. It's about the fact that we don't have supervision. If, if there was supervision there tomorrow, proper trained supervision, that we knew what the expectations were, I'd have the place open at four o'clock tomorrow afternoon. But I don't, I don't have supervision in place.
All right. We have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. David, how about it?
I will do that. I'll start in tomorrow morning. I'll, I'll Tom first thing.
Now, now the next item is the nearest and dearest to our meeting tonight. Considering adopting a proposed municipal development plan, and I know Mel would like to make a comment.
Yeah. One thing I, one thing I, what I should have added to, to this is that along with, along with adopting the plan, we would also like to have this forwarded to regional planning for, for their approval. I can't, I can't think if that's the right term that they use. But we are, we are currently planless. Our municipal plan expired last night at midnight, so we don't have a plan. And therefore, I would recommend that the city council adopt the plan that's before you. And, you know, this plan can be amended at any time. So if there's something that, when you go back and happen to reread it a, a third time, you see something in there, bring that to the attention of the planning commission. This is, this is not to be thought about as being a document that is going to sit right there in that state for the next five years. That's not the way it should be, should be considered. So I would, I would recommend that the council adopt this plan as, as in its last form, and that it, that it move, that it move to the Addison County Regional Planning for their approval.
I'll make that motion.
Who wants to go first? Ladies before gentlemen?
Yes.
I will make that motion.
Chris made motion, Randy made, and seconded. Open for discussion.
I have a question about Matt Jerry's point about, can you clarify?
Yeah, I, I really think, Neil, I tried to grab it. The, the, he's brought up professional services a couple of times. And I believe that at one of our earlier meetings, I concluded that it actually was, it was a typo, that it was professional studio is what was meant to be there. And I thought that we had corrected that at one point.
What's in the, what's in the revision that we suggested the city council make, and the city council did make, includes multiple family dwelling, medical services, clinic, nursing home, professional studio, professional office, office, boarding house, and bed and breakfast, and.
So we correct, we made that correction a while.
And that's, that's, so that's what's before you. And I, I would, I mean, Matt spent a bunch of time talking about definitions that are in zoning language and all this sort of stuff. And I, I would, there is a little bit of a cart horse sort of thing happening, which is to say that the plan envisions many changes to the zoning regulations. And so we will be looking at all these definitions and updating them and squaring them away when we get to the zoning regulations.
So that, so his question is saying, the definition of professional services, is it, you know, are we going to be able to, if somebody wants to put in a hair salon or a seamstress or somebody like that that wanted to move in here, is that going to be excluded or included?
Well, let me, let me first off, just make sure that we're clear. All of his discussion about professional services, get off the table. He is absolutely correct that we don't define professional services, and we've already changed that, and it says professional studio. Just set that aside. Relative to personal service, some of the things that you just mentioned, home occupations are a right. And so like, a person who lives at home and they want to have a hair salon, they can do that by right, all right? Certain thing, you know, teaching somebody trumpet lessons, all right, you know, people have a right to do those kinds of things. Relative to personal services, I think that, you know, Matt would like to be able to add personal service, where he spoke about that definition. And Matt has made reference to the survey and about how eighty-one out of a hundred and fifty-five, you know, felt that retail should be allowed in, in that district, and another number that may have been over fifty percent, all right? The, the planning commission discussed that at length. And, and it was a survey, all right? And it was a survey, and eighty-one out of a hundred and fifty-five felt that it was okay for retail to be in the area between Virgin's, or between Virgin's Animal Hospital and such. The planning commission didn't agree with the results of that survey on that point. It's, it's not a commercial district. It's residential slash limited, limited business. You know, standalone offices are okay, but it's not to be a location that is, you know, predominantly commercial. So, you know, the planning commission heard, heard Matt, and their proposal was to keep it quote unquote, limited, limited business. It's, it's, it's not intended to be a commercial area. So Matt, you know, I think, you know, you know, relative to the history of working with Matt, you know, his property was changed. It used to be medium density residential. The planning commission and the city council changed that piece of property to limited business. We've also expanded some of the, some of the uses allowed in that limited district. And that's really about as far as the, as the planning commission elected to go, based on not only their own discussion, but about three years ago, I think way before the plan process was started, they had a meeting of that neighborhood. And there were some folks, I think Joe, either you or your wife attended that, trying to figure out how the folks felt who lived in that there. And I, and I don't, I don't mean to pick on Phil Gullian, but, you know, Phil spoke very strongly about, you know, not being, in essence, these are my words instead of his, not being the last single family residence there. You know, he wanted it, it is a neighborhood, and he wanted it to be a neighborhood at the end. And so, you know, trying to keep it, you know, predominantly, you know, residential was really the, really the goal there. And, and, you know, Matt's proposal to start opening up, you know, a lot more commercial type activities just wasn't supported by the planning commission.
So what you're saying, for example, and like saying an attorney could actually go in that building?
Live there? Oh, yeah, an attorney? Absolutely. Standalone office, Neil? Standalone office?
Standalone office, that's what you're saying.
Absolutely.
They have a change. I mean, we're, we're making some changes for Matt.
Because I thought, I thought somebody had to live there in order to have that, but you're saying.
When it was medium density residential, that was the case.
That's right.
But when the, when the planning commission changed the zoning to create another residential slash limited business district, because we have a residential limited business district starting here at City Hall, going to, I think, the intersection of Moncton Road, I'm going to say, Virgin's Variety. And then there is a stretch that remained medium density residential. And then a, a new residential limited business district was created to, in essence, become a transition zone between the commercial district, i.e. Virgin's Animal Hospital, Denneker's, Kennedy Brothers, and the residential district. Dr. Simmons's office is in that same limited, limited business district. So in essence, even though medical services are handled a little bit differently, that's an example, you know, you know, Mel Sim, Mel and Gene don't live there, you know, that's a, you know, in essence, a standalone office, although medical.
Okay. I just want to get that clear in my head on that.
Let me just, before I came in, I reread our memorandum from July fifteenth. And I like what we said about, it's just one sentence I'd like to review. You know, basically, as Mel says, you know, through that public hearing a couple of years ago, the PC heard mixed input from residents of this neighborhood. While some folks requested more intensive commercial uses, others appreciated the residential nature of the area and requested supporting the existing residential uses. Because neighbors have not come out strongly for one side or the other, the PC recommends incremental changes as the most appropriate policy. And I, I stand behind that.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
I really appreciate your patience with the process and listening to me yammer on about these things on a, on a regular basis. And I speak for the planning commission. We're, we're just thrilled to death and really proud of the work that you all have just adopted. Thanks.
Well, thanks again for all, your committee and all the hard work that they, they have done over the last year, year and a half. Excellent. I have a bunch of information I want to share with you. I'll let you look at this after if you'd like to. Tomorrow, Les Chomplain will receive this plaque. It's the key to the city. And we're going to do a luncheon in his honor. He has, he's going to retire after thirty-one years of service with the city. And I'd ask the council and any other citizens that run into Les over the next couple of weeks to extend their thanks and well wishes for his, for what he has provided to the city. So I'll, I'll leave this up here and anybody can look at it right afterwards. Thanks. And you never know how gifted Mel is, but he came through again. I needed a proclamation and he, he zipped one together for me. Just so that you know, September twenty-third, Northland Job Corps was celebrating like forty-five years or so. And actually, they, we, we needed, they were asking if we could possibly make it Northland Job Corps Day on the twenty-third. So it was within my power and Mel's great writings that he did a proclamation. And anybody that wants to see there, that as well, I'll have that up here.
And Joan's great proofreading.
And Joan's proofreading. So excellent job there. Thank you, Mel. Update on boats. Two thousand and nine was a, a very good year. It's not over with. We expect maybe ten to fifteen more boats. People do foliage tours and whatnot. We had four hundred and sixty powerboats so far and two hundred and eighty-five sailboats. That equates to seven hundred and forty-five compared to a grand total of last year of six hundred and fifty-eight. That's good. Hopefully, it was good for the businesses. I'm, I did hear from a lot of boaters that they made quite a few stops in several different, or several locations throughout our city, which was great. We've got some fine plans for next year. Hopefully, we can build, build some dock, larger docks to accommodate more. And we have some fun things. We're going to try to move a couple band concerts down on Falls Park. I already talked to Sue Phil, yeah, Sue Phil, yeah, Sue Odanelle, I always get that wrong. And she's looking forward to accommodating us. She's just put a stipulation that we can't do it during the strawberry festival. So I said, no problem. But we can have some fun things like, and another person said something about possibly having a, a town picnic down there while they have the, so we're looking at expanding the use and, and it is getting a lot of use. There is a haunted forest meeting tomorrow night at the fire station at seven PM. We're going to finalize the skits and where things are going. We've got a lot of interest. We have three ladies from Heinsberg that are coming down and, and to join in on the fun. We've had calls from Middlebury Lions Club that want to join in. The kids from the school are signing up, Boys and Girls Club. Hopefully, we don't get the rain that we did last year, but a lot, a lot of fun, a lot of people. So anybody that can make that meeting, come and try to, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have a great time. Promise.
Time of the meeting, please.
Huh?
Time of the meeting, in please.
Tomorrow night, seven PM, Virgin's Fire Station. And the actual event will be October seventeenth. And we're going to be starting at around seven PM in the evening and going till about nine. So looking forward to see everybody around. Joan has also put in our flyer, in our folders, an event about Vermont Downtown Conference. Anybody that wants to go to that, please get signed up for that because it's coming, it's going to be here before we know it, November sixth. So, and that's being held right down in Middlebury, at the Middlebury Inn in the Town Hall Theater. Rarely do we hear good things, but our friend Lucy Laboue and Lance sent us a thank you note. Seems like they thought somebody might have broke into their house and when actually the door popped open and the cat got out, which was an inside cat. And then PD helped out finding the cat. And this story has a happy ending, so.
Cat, again.
Yeah. Oh, geez. So that is on the positive side. We like those positive things. It's like the economy. You hear about people saying the economy is doing better, and it seems like it does better. If you tell the doom and gloom, then we head back downhill. So we're going to stop telling a little bit of the doom and gloom and try to stay on the positive notes. Next positive note is, next meeting is October thirteenth, seven PM. So other than that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion?
Second.
Motion, and Randy got by Ziggy and seconded by Randy. He got it out first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I knew there wouldn't be any.